Should we start?
All right, yes. Thanks all, sorry for the late meeting. We had another forum that ran over. Call to order the Monpelier-Roxbury Board of School Commissioners at, sorry, I need the time.
6:50?
6:52. So first order is public comment, which is five minutes, so.
So I'm Elaine Tuie.
And please either come to the microphone or the chair and you just announce yourself, but please announce yourself again.
You're not going to be louder, which is from the video camera.
So I'm Elaine Tuie, I'm a parent of a student, current student, and I have two other students who will be coming up through. One's two, so not for a while. And I'm just here to kind of give some input about health education that my kids reflected back to me. And I guess that education, that piece is that I would like to see that be more inclusive of all students. And I guess the big pieces with that that have come up are being able to redirect conversations and be really kind of educated on some subjects that are difficult or even triggering or traumatizing. And having some outside people maybe come in and talk on those specific topics. And yeah, I think that's the biggest piece. My child is transgender, so there were things that happened last year that he actually is not in health class now. And a correspondence class to cover his health education is not acceptable. The class needs to actually be, and the curriculum needs to be set up in a way where my child's included, and all children are included in that curriculum.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Mara Iverson. I also live in Monpelier, and I also wanted to chat about health education. My focus is mainly that sex education in the Monpelier School District really needs a lot of, kind of, a lot of things. It could use some review, it could use some thinking about whether more educators are necessary, whether they're trained to offer appropriate information. I actually mostly, the first time I got worried about it was when I had a student, I teach sex ed in town at the church, I teach the Owl program. And one of my students who had been through my program came and said, "The health teacher today told us that non-latex condoms don't prevent pregnancy and STIs." Like, and I was like, "Well then what would be the point of wearing one if it didn't prevent pregnancy and STIs?" And so I was like, "What are you learning at school if that seemed concerning to me?" So that's my, I'd really be interested in having a deeper conversation about what we could do to enhance, broaden, deepen sex education in Monpelier School District.
Great, thank you both.
Thank you both.
Do you know that this is a topic on our agenda for the upcoming?
Yeah, we are going to continue discussions about.
Is there a timeline or a?
It will certainly appear on the agenda. We haven't set any timeline. I think we're likely going to do it in the, you know, in the guise of making sure we promote equity on a, you know, a gender and basis.
Did you figure out how to find the agenda?
We did, we figured out that cell phones don't access all of your agendas, so that is.
That's good to know.
That is good to know.
We both have access to different information and neither of us have access to all of it.
Huh, okay.
Well, that's a bug. Let's fix that.
We'll look into that.
It's all accessible through Google Drive, right?
I'd have to look.
Isn't that where everything is? Is that where you want, like?
No, you can't scroll over to the board packets online, so I didn't know there were board packets. And then on hers, you can see the board packets, but they stop at December. I can see all the way to the end of the year, I just can't scroll the way over, so.
Interesting. Thank you for letting us know that.
It's better than when you couldn't even get anything on your iPad. We've improved a little bit.
Still a problem.
You haven't sworn in yet?
We're still in public comment.
I thought about it before this second.
You can do it by phone, you know. Yeah, and I think you're supposed to do it before it terms up. Okay, and yeah, thanks for reminding. Unfortunately, the learning focus piece, which is a big part of our agenda, the students were unable to come tonight, there were some things that popped up, so we have a much shorter agenda, which since we're starting late, is not the worst thing in the world. We're talking about that, is Renee on call if we need her earlier?
Yeah, I can, I can check.
Okay.
Is she here?
No.
She's going to Google chat in, but if she's, I don't think it just.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Any?
I have a, I have a quick, oh my God, I'm sorry, this is.
Well, the question is, so you can get it on your phone, but maybe we just need more clear navigational instructions.
Okay, so did I have to do the consent agenda?
Could be Apple, could be operating system.
Yeah, well, to address that, I noticed that it wouldn't scroll up anyways, it doesn't matter. It'll be dealt with outside this. I do have a question about the consent agenda, it was something related to superintendent's report, which is the unified basketball team.
Okay, so do you want to remove that from the?
Yes.
Okay, so let's make a motion to.
Just ask, just ask a question, or we don't even need to remove it, we can approve it and I'd just like to ask a question.
Afterwards?
Yeah, that's fine.
We have a discussion after the motion is approved to accept the consent agenda.
So we can discuss after, after we approve?
Yeah. It's, my vote doesn't. After you make the motion, after you make the motion to accept, is there any more discussion? And then after the discussion is over, we would accept.
Even for consent agenda?
I thought you couldn't do that.
The whole point was you can't discuss.
Well, let's, let's just pull that and approve without that item, then we'll discuss.
I amend my motion to.
Did folks see that Heather sent out the different distribution lists this afternoon, just adding Roxbury Middle School?
So I amend my motion to say that I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, taking out the superintendent's report and noting that the list of where agendas and warnings are are different than was in the packet. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, your question.
This will be very brief. The unified basketball team.
Yep.
Is that Monpelier and U32, is that a combined sports team?
We have some students from U32 on that team, yes. Matt McLean's son Noah is on it, as well as Carolyn Canary's daughter is on it. So yeah, we often share things with U32 when, when they don't offer, or we don't offer.
So that's great, because that kind of dovetails with my question, it doesn't need to be addressed for next time, maybe this summer it can be addressed, but a question that, I've received numerous questions about, well, how are we sharing resources with U32? Are we, are we operating in silos? Do we, do we share? Are there opportunities to leverage economies of scale and offer enhanced programming? And, and I know we are doing that in some places.
Yeah, the quick answer is yes. So when U32, I'm sorry if I cut you off. U32 offers something that we don't, for instance, football, then Monpelier students can try out for that team. And when Monpelier offers something that U32 doesn't, debate, then U32 students can join us.
How about with academic programming?
We don't have as much sharing going on with academic programming.
So I guess a question, and I don't know how difficult.
But the schedules don't.
Yeah, it's hard, it gets a little more difficult when you're talking about classes, in-house classes.
So it's primarily for extracurriculars where we're seeing this? Would, would it be possible at some point to just get an outline of where we are sharing those resources? Is that something that would be on our?
No.
Okay. Because that would just, I think, help inform the discussion about this, because it's something that regularly comes up, but thanks. Like I said, wasn't going to impact my vote on this, so. I'm motion to approve the superintendent's report.
Yes.
I'll second that.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
I can also say, well, just a last little bit, the final, Heather, you know this, the final unified basketball game is?
Next Tuesday, the 11th.
Next Tuesday, the 11th, at 3:30. It's a great time to come and cheer on the kids, so.
Thursday, the 11th.
Thursday. So if anybody can come, then please come on over, I'll take your picture and tweet it up. But it's a great, it's a good time, it's a good time.
Great, so next is board business. The first item, when we put our merger agreement together, there was a typo, a couple of digits on a statutory reference, and a cut and paste job did not get removed, so the, the articles of merger between Roxbury and Monpelier reference a statute that does not exist. Were the specifics in the packet?
Yeah, have they printed out the, she just printed out the emails with it.
Yeah. So, so we talked to Peter, he said the simplest way to kind of cross the i's and dot the t's on this was just to have the board recognize and approve that that was a typographical error and that there's a correction to that error. It was like section 55, and it was printed as like section 5536.
Right, the only change for the public is that it's just a number that was incorrect, so they're not changing any substance, just, you're just changing the number to reflect the actual number.
Exactly, it is, it is a cut and paste mistake.
Jim, who found the cut and paste mistake?
Steve Dale, who was the.
He was just going back and reading the old.
He was going nightly reading. For fun. He says it has been brought to my attention. I don't know.
Oh, right, his attention, yes.
I was curious.
Maybe, I think I could have met someone at ESPN or, you know, maybe he had a family member that was having some problems sleeping and.
Started to read the merger agreement again.
So if we get a vote on making that change.
So we need a motion.
We need a motion. That's what I meant to say.
Do we need a motion that's this whole thing that Steve said at the bottom? I mean, I'll read that if that's what we need to do.
Sure.
It's just kind of long.
All right, I will move, that follows. The articles of agreement were approved by the electorate of the Monpelier-Roxbury Public Schools in spring 2017. In March 2019, we were informed of a typographical error in Article 11. The original approved article specified that in the new district, the vote on the quote "annual budget and public questions shall be conducted by Australian ballot pursuant to 17 VSA Chapter 5513B," close quote. There is no Chapter 5513B. The intent of that wording was to simply read pursuant to 17 VSA Chapter 55. That typo is hereby corrected by vote of the Monpelier-Roxbury School District Board. Article 11 is modified to read, "The unified district board of school directors shall propose annual budgets in accordance with 16 VSA Chapter 11. The vote on the annual budget and public questions shall be conducted by Australian ballot pursuant to 17 VSA Chapter 55."
I'll second.
All's in favor? Or any discussion?
All's in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, done that. Next item is after-school discussion, I'll just open it.
Can I just ask, who's going to actually do it? Someone has to actually do this now, right?
Where is it filed?
I don't know, we just thought I'd throw that out there.
Good idea.
Okay, sorry.
That's a good question. Who do we inform?
Like, we could take the minutes that reflected and stapled. I would imagine if he was the person who did this. Yeah, or you just do that.
At least Steve would know.
Steve would know where to go with it.
Yeah, all right.
So where is this kept? Who's the keeper of this?
That's what we don't happen to know right now. I'm assuming maybe the agency of education.
Yeah, the district clerk.
Probably have to send it to, oh, right, the district clerk.
The district clerk.
That's right.
Oh, that's probably the person.
So, Jamie Legacy.
Yep.
Yeah.
She actually has something to do.
That's correct.
So after-school discussion, we've had quite a bit of progress on, on making a decision about what the after-school programming will be next year, basically on the provider. As you know, back in, was it December? No, January. Back in January, we taxed, 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 tasked, and appointed a committee to set up an RFP process where we would take in bids and that the committee would work with Libby on advising her about a decision. That committee has been formed, I want to thank all the members, including Bridgette, but also we have a couple of community members, Christine Zaki, Rebecca Copans, Cassie Willner, Sam Brondeik, who's a student representative, and then Ryan Harity, the principal of UES, and Matt Roy, the vice principal at MSMS, have also participated in the committee. We've received, we, you know, the committee worked to set out some parameters, put together the RFP, we sent it out, we received four proposals. One from CC, which is the existing provider and is an entity of Washington Central Supervisor Union. One from the After-School Collaborative, which is doing business known as Part Two, which is a for-profit provider that provides after-school services for a lot of schools in Chittenden County, is looking to expand into Washington County. The Y, which actually does programming nationally, but they have a pretty vigorous program in Vermont, and they provide throughout the state, including to our neighbors in Waterbury and Berry, and the Monpelier Rec Department. We passed out, we're weighing costs, we're weighing, you know, capacity, we're weighing kind of all the factors that we've put together. But a piece I want to talk about, or let me talk about, in addition to, you know, the proposals, is as we make a decision, there's kind of two components to after-school care. There is the licensed component, which is regulated by the state, which most of the UES programming falls into. As you start to get to the older grades, we have a lot more what we call enrichment programming, which is somewhat like co-curricular, but, but a little different. It's the more, you know, segment programming that oftentimes focuses on an activity, you know, mountain biking, a sport, woodworking, et cetera, that's not licensed. That programming right now, a lot of that programming is provided by the current provider and funded through a combination of fees, subsidy from the district, and then revenue that's generated from the licensed programming, particularly at Union Elementary School. That's a critical piece of our after-school care. We did not ask for the RFPs to include that, we asked the RFPs only to include the licensed portion. Three of the RFPs only included the licensed portion, one of the RFPs also included the non-licensed after-school portions, so we're trying to, the committee's trying to consider it with that in mind. But what we want to do with the non-licensed enrichment program, we obviously want that to continue, it's very popular, it does great things for kids, we want to continue along the value lines that it currently exists, and with as much continuity as possible, but we also want to think about chances to really expand and stabilize that, and also fix some, some issues we've had. For instance, there's just been some issues with transportation and doing that legally in a way that, that meets demand. So one, one consideration that has, that we've been batting around is bringing that piece in district, and that would require a commitment of current funds and probably some additional funds to do that, to make that sustainable, but there's also, there's a lot of advantages to that, and I'll let Libby kind of explain the thinking.
Sure, we're in a very, we're in the beginning stages of this, and I have something that was not part of your board packet, and I apologize for that. I was getting feedback up until three o'clock today. From some members of the after-school committee, and I wanted to make sure I heard from people. And so this is, this is very much draft, okay, so put that in mind. The district, we have budgeted, and it has passed, because our budget passed, $37,000 towards some sort of after-school piece. So what this proposal, this draft proposal is putting out there, is that we hire a new position. So we hire a position for a .5, right, currently, that's what we're thinking the need is from leadership team, a .5 extended day enrichment coordinator. That person would be responsible for organization logistics, parent registration, collecting fees, working with our business office to making it happen. It would be very similar to food services, how food services is run currently, which is run, run as an enterprise, so we would, we would add an additional enterprise, and I'm actually happy Grant is not in the room, because he starts to choke up a little bit when I suggest that, but because for him, at his end, it's a little difficult, but we can do that, we already have it in place with food services. So that position would be collecting the funds, they'd be going out in the community to find community partnerships, surveying students to find out what their, their likes and dislikes, and what they really want for club-like activities. We would also be looking at, oh, so there's that position, so let's, I'll separate that first. That's what I'm proposing for the board. I believe that the $37,000 would cover a .5 position under the APSCME contract. If you're, we're also looking at these club activities being, we'd ask parents to contribute as they do now, in a very low-cost way. So that cost would also help provide sustainability to that position, as well as increase our capacity over time. So one of the pieces that we really are looking at is to have licensed engaging, licensed engaged childcare from K through six offered to our students, and then starting in, with lots of engaging activities as part of that process, so they're not just sitting there doing coloring pages, right?
Provided by someone else.
Contracted out, yes. Contracted by somebody else, they would be responsible through our, through work with our principals and our community around what engaging, club-like activities those, that would require. Then when students move into seventh grade, they move into more enrichment, extended day, not licensed choice activities that we offer multiple, very similar to what we have now, except it's sustainable, more sustainable, because it'd be through a district lens, we'd be able to protect it and to move forward with increasing our capacity. We see that at the leadership team level as a potential possibility to transition students well between eighth and ninth grade and provide a bridge in a very fun, easy way, as well as increase our capacity for, for opportunities that are not sports, drama, or music-related here at the high school necessarily. We have excellent opportunities for kids if they're into sports and drama and music. If you're not into those three things, then we have less opportunity here at the high school. We're also very cognit, I've been talking to Dave Bennett quite a bit, who is a person who's been doing this work at the high school. We're, both he and I are very concerned with overscheduled, highly, highly-involved kids, and so providing opportunities to let go of some of that and work with anxiety, which is huge, with our overscheduled, highly-functioning kids, as well as provide opportunities for kids who just don't, aren't into sports and aren't into drama, but still want to have a group to, to work on leadership skills and develop themselves and working with people without a screen in their face. So Dave and I are, have been talking quite a bit about that, and I also feel as Renee comes on in a little bit, that's an excellent project for a new principal to take on here at the high school, to help vision and build that program. So back to, the position is key because it allows us to sustain, build, and grow from where we are now.
Questions, Andrew.
How is that money currently being used?
Currently, it is given to CC to offset the cost at MSMS.
And?
Kina.
Would, would the theory be that, I understand what this person's going to do, and then the activities themselves are self-supporting?
Through parent revenue.
Right, through, of fee.
And, yeah.
Okay.
So, so the vision is not that the person hired to be the coordinator would be the person providing? No, in fact, we wouldn't want them to provide the services. We want them to focus on the logistical piece, so the people who do provide services can really focus on that and develop high-quality programming.
Would that increase the cost to students who are using the program?
I don't, I don't envision that happening. We haven't, we haven't gone through like cost structure, and people, we haven't, we're not at that stage yet, we're just not there yet, but I don't envision that happening.
But the disbursement to CC, it wasn't that direct as this is going to offset the cost to our students by this percentage, is that correct?
No, we don't have that information. It just went to a, a general fund at Washington Central. We sent a check to Washington Central in $18,000 increments twice a year. So we don't, so Andrew, because I know you're going to ask, when I look at budget sheets from, from the current Community Connections Program, I can't tell where that money goes. It goes into Washington Central's pot.
Yeah. My overarching concern in asking that question is that I think an after-school program is in the community and public good, and while, and I think the idea of a hybrid payment model that we have right now, fees for those who use it, but those fees being brought down by contributions from the community, I think is a pretty healthy model. And I just want to ensure that we continue with that general model and aren't putting too many, too much of the cost and too much of that financial burden on those families that rely on these services.
Right, right. No, I agree with you, and that's the, that's where we want to go as well, that's, that's the idea that we want to make happen.
Michelle.
So it says under the, you, you just explained that the halftime person would be sort of an administrative position rather than a, not work directly with kids. And it says under here, recruit club advisors would be one of their responsibilities. Are we anticipating that the revenue from program fees is enough to pay the club advisors?
I think, so that's the piece that we have to think about with cost structure, so we're not there yet. And so there's, there's lots of questions there, right? It's not a co-curricular, because it's not structured in the same way. I'm imagining six weeks programming, one day a week, you know, very similar to what's happening now, so that doesn't fall under our co-curricular teacher contract. So we want to look at how, how much do we need to, like, that would be a new, new world for us. How much do we pay people for an hour and a half a week after school to do woodworking? And if they're a community member, what does that look like versus if they're a teacher, what does that look like? Those are still questions that we need to uncover, which, thus the position to help us, to help us work through those, those pieces.
But, but generally speaking, that's what you're anticipating?
Yes.
That the program fees would pay?
The program fees plus the budgeted amount would help pay for fee things.
Okay.
Eventually, if we increase our capacity, which I would really like to do, I may be coming to the board in future budgeting years saying, "Let's increase this line," so that we can access more kids, so that we can tar, intentionally target more kids with this programming.
So I definitely want to see more kids get in the program, and I'm okay with supporting it with the budget, but I, you had told us back at the beginning of this conversation in the winter, that it was unusual for our community to budget funds for after-school, because we're not legally allocated.
For middle school.
To provide anything.
Right.
After three o'clock.
For middle school, yes, you're right.
So, but we had asked that question of the Vermont After-School Association, did we get any further information from them as to whether there are other districts that subsidize?
Did we ask Kathy that specifically?
I've talked to, we can ask it more specifically. My understanding is there is some districts that do some sort of.
We don't really know the answer to that.
No.
We don't really know the answer to that. Like, for instance, she has mentioned that South Burlington does a lot of stuff in district that is traditionally covered, or that other schools tend to cover through, through contracts.
I mean, that, I think. And, and the piece of separating the extended day and the. And, and the piece of separating the extended day and the licensed childcare, I'm not sure what districts do with that piece.
I mean, we do pay, we do pay co-curricular stipends for sports coaches and that kind of thing. Maybe just sports coaches, I don't know.
No, we do with drama and we do with lots of things.
When we were having this discussion initially, and you'd be more familiar with this mechanism than I am, Libby, but we learned that many other schools that have a certain percentage of free and reduced students are eligible for federal funding.
Yes.
And, and we're not because we don't have that percentage. So my, my perspective on this is because we're not, those, those students that do come from disadvantaged socioeconomic backgrounds shouldn't be penalized as a result for having a lesser percentage.
For living in a more wealthier place.
Yeah, exactly.
Good point, Andrew.
And so that's where I do see a role for, for the board and being a leader on this type of thing.
Steve, and then Bridget.
I just had two clarifying questions. I, I have to admit to not understanding some of the structures. So you, you kinda draw the line or maybe all between sixth and seventh in terms of where that goes. I know that, at least from my daughter's experience in fifth and sixth is that Drew's been the contact for fifth and sixth and that she's been participating in mountain biking and all the same things, I think, as the older kid, I might be wrong about that. You know, and we're looking, you know, wood, wood shop and all the other things. So does that mean in the future, fifth and sixth, I'm not, I realize it's all being run under CC right now, but what's the decision or what's the reasoning for cutting it at six? And then the other pieces that Michelle just started mentioning a little bit, with the co-curricular versus the enrichment, they seem to be a really similar thing. And I'm wondering if it makes more sense for the district to adopt these things as co-curricular at seventh and eighth, rather than as enrichment. And I think that from a curriculum or from a whole child perspective, that actually brings it, integrates things a lot better than if we continue to consider it separate. Just, just questions.
No, those are really, thanks for asking both those questions. Don't let me forget the latter one, cause I, we've talked about, we've talked about both of these things. So one of the things that came up, Matt Roy actually brought this to our attention when we were talking about this in the after-school advisory committee. Cause we talked about originally, the district could, could potentially take on enrichment and make it middle school, fifth grade on. And Matt brought up the really good point of currently, and he worries about in the future, of a have and have-not scenario. So if you're a kid who is in fifth grade and is in licensed childcare and not doing the mountain biking piece, he could, he could potentially, as a, as an expert and at that age level, see kids saying, well, I'm going mountain biking, you're stuck in the, you're stuck in the, over here doing whatever you're doing over here. And so he was very concerned about, about people who have things, like would be considered the enrichment kids and people who don't have things would be the licensed childcare kids. So that was very concerning to him, which I thought was a very good point. I'm not saying it eloquently as he did in the meeting. And so when we started talking about that more, Matt and I started talking about that more, we started saying, well, if we make the assumption that we really work with our licensed childcare provider to provide engaging opportunities for our fifth and sixth grade that have a club-like, a club structure to them where there's choice and, and that kind of thing. But it's still within the licensed childcare, we could have that piece. And then seventh and eighth grade, generally, we don't suspect that many seventh and eighth graders will participate in the licensed childcare because they're at the age where they may not need it. They may not need that, that space like a fifth grader might. So then we could offer the enrichment activities for those who would really like to participate in very specific choice activities for the seventh and eighth grade. That, nothing's set in stone around that. That was our reasoning why, though that, when I was talking to Matt, that was the reasoning why for that. The stip, or the, I'm sorry, the second part of your question around co-curriculars, we've talked about that too as a leadership team on Tuesday. And one, some of the things that we were talking about is, we could solely go that direction and we talked about going that direction. We have way more flexibility if we don't. Cause once you have the co-curricular in place, then it's in place and, and you can't add them ad nauseam. It just, it, so if we have like quick six-week verse, that means we can change the program by year, like that one didn't go last year, let's try something else this year. And we can find, a community member comes in and says, hey, I wanna do a six-week thing on oil painting, all of a sudden, we can quickly make that happen. Whereas a co-curricular, we go through a contract, we find a person, you know, it becomes a much more long process. So that's why the leadership team said, no, let's keep it as like very quick verse of club activities. We could do, we could go either way though.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Does, does the term co-curricular mean, is the definition of that, that someone on our faculty is the advisor under the contract and gets paid?
Not necessarily somebody on our faculty, but it's part of our teacher contract, so.
Maybe it's a contract.
So the definition isn't really that it's this kind of programming versus that kind of programming, it's really?
There's some, there's some very specific definitions in the contract. So then there's, there's levels of payment in there, so like if it meets once a week for, for a semester, that's different than if it's a full year with multiple planning up, planning responsibilities versus, you know, so it's, it's just different. It's just different, there's, it, it's a contracted item.
Sorry to jump ahead of Tina, I just was getting confused.
I'm curious to know if this point-five person or if you've talked about this, is this person also in charge of hiring the people that would run this program and supervising the people that would run this program?
Supervision would come from the, it would be a district responsibility. So the supervision would, they would be the monitor for that piece. They would be in charge of the, the hiring and the, and getting, I mean, it would go through me eventually, but, but they would be the ones finding, yes. I would envision that to happen.
Other questions, comments?
So, to follow up on the point that Steve was making about age. I would have said that my sense was that in terms of the current enrichment programming at, at MSMS, that a lot of younger kids are using it. And that this structure may be, may be a loss in that regard. Because I'm, as hopeful as I am about the licensed program being a great program, I'm not sure, just because of the transportation issues, that the licensed program is likely to be doing.
They would be, they would be more limited to side base until, until they solve the transportation dilemma, yeah.
Right, and that's, and that's a problem. I'm not sure that that, I mean, I, I think we've also discussed in the committee the possibility that the licensed program can wrap with enrichment, you know, so that you can be enrolled in the licensed program but still able to, you know, on some days do other things if you're also doing the enrichment program. And I think especially for sixth grade, you know, when we moved the fifth grade there, I'm not sure that the process, the thought about after-school care was totally thought through. And I think the fifth grade really needs after-school care. Similar to what they used to have when they were at Union and the fifth graders went to that program until they moved. But as the kids get older, I think that the appeal of these activities becomes greater.
What's interesting is, one comment from the online piece, which I know only Jim and I have access to at the moment, but from the online feedback, one, one individual in the community said that the enrichment opportunities at Main Street are overwhelmed with fifth and sixth graders, so seventh and eighth graders often don't get an opportunity. They get left out of that, so it's, it's interesting.
Well, because there's more of a childcare need for fifth and sixth, so, you know, there's more pressure from parents to get kids enrolled when they're younger.
Sometimes, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's, like I said, this is a draft. It's not set in stone and I am very much looking for feedback to see how we can make this bigger, or how we can make this better. And keeping Matt's concern and I think the concern about haves and have-nots is a, is a legit one. So how, if we were to bring it down to lower grade levels, how do we ensure that that's not a, that doesn't happen?
I have one question, following up on Steve's question about the co-curricular approach. I, first of all, I can totally understand and appreciate wanting to use a less bureaucratic approach that will enable us to deliver services quicker to kids that want those services. I think that's great, offer better programming sooner. What would be the advantage of a co-curricular versus the, the approach that you were talking about?
It'd be set, families could rely on it, could know that there, there will be woodworking offered every fall by Jason, you know. So it would be, it's something that people could rely on a little bit more. Honestly, I see more limits to that direction than I see benefits. I'd have, I'd have to really think through, I'd have to think through a little bit more. The one that chom, jumps to my mind is that it would be set, it's set in, it's a contract, so it'd be set in stone a little bit better.
Even, even though this would likely be regularly occurring particularly to successful programs, I'd imagine.
Yeah.
I can't say the reason why that wouldn't be.
Right, right.
Michelle.
This is pretty irrelevant, but I just wanna say it in case this document gets circulated and I think it will be on our website, right? And people may take an interest in it. It looks like the high school has five clubs.
No, I know. I can tell you why, that's like that.
There are like three times.
No, I know. Today Bridget gave me some really good feedback from the first, first draft.
Okay.
And one of them was, make sure that you put down like, or, or it would be really good for the board to know, these are all the things that are offered right now.
Yeah.
So I was doing this at about four-thirty this afternoon and so, so it was like quick off the top of my brain. And as I was doing it, I was thinking, I need to share this with the principals too, so that they can make sure that everything's on here. And that's why that happened.
Okay, just check it. So before it gets circulated, cause it's gonna make us look like the lamest high school ever is. That's not the image we wanna put in.
Before it's posted, you could look that up.
We'll make sure that with that gets fixed, that's, that's the reason why, cause Bridget had such good feedback and I was like, oh, I wanna get that in before tonight. And then it just didn't get totally in there.
I think I saw.
So I, this issue of the co-curricular versus the clubs, I, I did not fully understand the, the bureaucratic piece, for lack of a better word. But one of the things that I have been concerned about in terms of the after-school big picture at the middle school and I think at the high school, though I'm less familiar with it there, is that it's very hard to understand the big picture and to understand how like the district is looking at it thirty thousand feet. What are all the things that we're offering to kids and how are they coordinated? Is it the right mix of offerings? Is it the right mix of sports and STEM and drama and music? Do we have, you know, are we hitting all the bases? What does it look like in terms of scheduling? Can you be on the soccer team and be in the jazz band at the same time? Like how are we looking at that? Are we funding all of these things correctly?
And how many kids are in sports?
How many kids are in these things?
If two-thirds of the students are in sports, maybe we only need after-school stuff for one-third of the kids. But if only one-third of the kids are in sports, then our after-school need might be a lot larger.
Right. I would really prefer if we're, and I totally, I'm not sure this is enough money, I'm gonna do that. I think, I think we should, kids, you know, five to twelve includes all of these things. So that there's, you know, these issues about do we have a softball team and our kids going mountain biking are in the same conversation and the same person is looking at it. And I, I, so, and I'll just finish where I was going with this, which is, we already budgeted this money and we have repeatedly said, you know, I've heard Jim say it over and over again and Libby, that we, we are committed to expanding this offer, this, these offerings. But this is the money that has been used to budget what we currently have. And I think that it would be helpful to get a sense of the board of whether we're willing to commit to money out of the fund balance to expand this so that if, so that we have the resources next year to start a really good program. And if they are self-sustaining, then we don't need to spend it. And that would be great, you know, but if they're not, that the district knows that the money is there and it's available so that we can fund it properly.
Great, I guess that's exactly what I'd love to know too.
I would like to know what I would be funding and I don't know that yet. So in other words, Libby has said this is the initial plan. And so what do we need and how much more do we need in order to do it? And so.
Some real numbers.
Some real numbers would be what I would wanna know before I said, sure, let's do it. I have nothing against it, I just wanna know, how much would it cost?
This initial draft was to get the feelers out, yeah. But we do need some real numbers, you're right.
Yeah, and I. What is our timeline right now? Where are we in the process? So there's RFPs out?
For the licensed childcare piece. And we're going on site visits this weekend and next to three of the sites. We have a after-school advisory committee on Friday to talk about the feedback we just got from the public forum. We'd like, the, so the committee will be giving me a recommendation by the end of this month, right Jim?
Yes.
Yes. So we could make that decision around the licensed childcare piece. This piece would need to be in place by September, I mean, we'd need to have it by September. So, so I'm thinking that we'd wanna, if we went this direction without new position, then we'd wanna have that higher in July, so they can get the ducks in a row that they need to get in a row.
Yeah, and to echo and I think build on what Bridget said, I mean, I'd love to get a sense of, cause I, I think is, you know, as we make these decisions, it's gonna be, you know, probably a somewhat stepped process. But I also think it's very important that we hit next year with, you know, the programming that kids need and the community wants. And part of that might, for the administration's part, mean building some of this out before we go through our budget process. So I think it would be good to have a sense of the board whether, you know, assuming it stays within a reasonable limit, there's support for, you know, if, if Libby says, yo, boy, if we added another twenty-five thousand, we could really get to where we need to be and have something to build on. That's the type of thing where she wouldn't come and, you know, put things in place and then have us say, well, you know, hold on.
What are you looking for? Are you looking for, do we support what you've written and, or are you looking for, gee, I wish I had another twenty-five thousand?
I think, I think we're looking for support of the concept, including support that if we can, you know, if, if we can, you know, if this is something that makes sense and, you know, thirty-seven thousand's all that's needed to do it in a way that makes sense starting next year and that'll make it stable for next year and then we can have a conversation the year after about whether we wanna add to it. Or if, after writing some of the numbers, it's thirty-seven plus a little bit, but I, I kinda wanna get an endorsement of the concept within this number or, you know, perhaps more but not, you know, a huge amount more. Cause, cause we, because the administration just has not, you know, they've got some ballpark ideas, but they haven't sat down, pen and paper with Grant and really ran through all the scenarios to come up with what, what it would look like to have the type of programming that kids need and that the community's gonna want next year.
Got it, thank you.
Steve, and then Andrew.
I think there's so many fantastic reasons to do this. The, the fifth, sixth though, kinda sticks a little here because the problem is as we move forward with licensing, we have to be really clear, I think, with what we want for those fifth, sixth, under a licensing agreement, under, under agreement for the licensing. Kids, because I think that it's a, you know, if we wanna try to keep something of the quality that we have, it can't shift towards that elementary model at all, really. What the kids running around in Jim at, at Union is very different than what a sixth grader or a fifth grader is getting right now at the middle school. I just wanna be careful, cause if we're gonna split them and take, and, and we're gonna develop a vision for the enrichment then, and we're gonna contract out the licensed kids, we gotta have definition about the five, six as we do that, I think. We can't, we can't put the cart before the horse, huh?
Right. Yeah, and that, that's something we definitely could keep looking at. And, and just to be clear, our current, our current situation handles twenty-five kids a day in a school of three-hundred-and-fifty. So it's not the entire fifth and sixth grade that is being, being considered right now in any way, shape, or form. So we need to, so we wanna make sure that that, that's one of my main goals, is to increase opportunity for particularly our middle schoolers who need this type of work. We need this type of group activity and structure.
Yeah, and, and increase the number too. I mean, it would be great to get, you know, more like forty-ish students at the middle school participating in that. And I think we do that by making, making exciting and accessible programming and building on the exciting and accessible program. Andrew.
So I have a couple of questions. The general vision for the coordinator that Bridget espoused just before, I, I, I love that general approach to coordination. If somebody is coming in, do we right now as a district have that information available? Is anybody keeping that information? How many kids are enrolled in, in what?
Is it on my, at my fingertips? No. Could we get that information? Yes.
So that's something that somebody could put to, if they came in in July, I'm just thinking about the timeline of this. If they came in in July, that's something that they would, with, with your team's assistance, be able to.
With time and talking to the right people, yes.
It would, it would be a process, that's fine. I was just curious to know where we are in terms of that. And then these, something that I think would be nice to have a little bit more elucidation on is how, exactly how these programs might interact with this position and the programs at this position would be, would be responsible for.
Which these licensed programs?
The licensed program versus the elementary programs, how they interact with each other.
Yep.
And, yeah, would they be totally distinct? I, I don't, I don't, you know, from a coordination perspective, I think siloing is no concern. But anyways, I'm curious to know how.
And it's hard to answer that without having the licensed childcare provider contracted yet.
And when you're looking at these providers, are you, so does this change, if this proposal, would this change how you view these providers?
In the RFP process?
Yeah.
No.
So, okay, some of their models, I guess my question is, would some of their models jive more than others with this type of approach?
Maybe.
Okay, that's.
I don't have the, that, I could, I'd have to ask them specifically. I don't want to speak to them because that's not a question that's been posed to the bidder. So I would be making the assumptions based on what I've read.
But now, here's my last question. In terms of what they've, the proposal that they've responded to, is it based on more of a holistic enrichment and licensure combo or is it based on just the licensure?
The licensure.
Okay.
And I think that's where the community piece comes in, because the original part is important to a lot of community members and for a lot of kids. So, and, and we're gonna need to have both in a really good place come August twenty-seventh through whenever school starts.
And it's really important to the district.
It's really important to the district.
As well, and us to make sure that we have ample opportunities for kids to build relationships.
Michelle?
I'm just concerned that the half-time employee is not going to be adequate. And I would definitely support drawing on our fund balance, which I think we got a memo on the fund balance, so I know there's money in there, to expand that, because this person is, you know, I know other, I guess, I know Burlington School District has a full-time after-school program coordinator. They have like six or seven facilities, I think, so that's a lot.
They have an in-district after-school program. They don't contract out.
Right. So, but this still is dealing with two separate facilities that are really, you know, developmentally different kids, eight different grades.
And if we truly want somebody to vision and sustain and grow.
So we may want either one full-time person who can oversee all of that or are part-time at each building who can oversee for each building.
Yeah, yeah.
To me, it seems like this isn't gonna, this person's gonna be killing themselves and maybe not making it happen the way we want it to.
More comments or questions? So I think this has been helpful in terms of giving some guidance as you steer through.
Yes, hard numbers, look at a couple of different scenarios, work through some more age ranges.
Yeah, but people are generally on board with this as a viable option and then the possibility that it might cost a little more to do it right. Might not, but it might.
I think for explaining to the community too, though, having that licensure component, like what we're proposing is this licensure provider would cover this, these grades, this area, this enrichment coordinator would cover this. And so that it's very tangible for people.
Yeah.
And they understand exactly what's going on. I think it's gonna be really important to this.
Right, like we're providing childcare K-six and then we're providing enrichment five, twelve, and there's.
Or maybe even a little more basic, like these are the options your children have for after-school care and you're the, yeah, the ways that, yeah, you can sign up and enroll. The thing is, there are terms like licensure out there.
Yeah.
And I think there's also a demand for enrichment K-twelve. And so I think it's important that that message from the district not be the enrichment starts at some grade level, whether it's, you know.
Yeah, and we, right, we're talking about that as well.
You know, where childcare is not a great word for what we're doing in our schools. If we're doing it in our schools, it's expected that it, that it have an educational value of some sort. And not that childcare doesn't, but they. I mean, you can see it already in second, third, fourth grades that these kids are looking for more, more advanced.
Different way. Yeah, no, but I think we, I think we want to make it more interesting and more interactive and more enriching, whether it falls under enrichment or licensing for all kids, you know, K through twelve.
We have also heard a demand, though, that it be reliable and accessible and available in a.
Exactly.
And cover all your work period.
Yep.
Right.
And available to more people.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the basement upon which to build a house, but we need.
Expand the availability, the reliability, the accessibility, and then build.
And the quality.
And then quality and.
Well, thank you. I'll, I'll be working on this with the team and we'll probably bring you another draft in the coming weeks.
One, one final question. The state childcare subsidies that were broken out in the chart that we were just going over in the last forum, those do not apply to enrichment, is that correct?
No, those are for the licensed piece.
Yeah, Libby, could the next draft have maybe more of a summary on expenses? And I just, all the numbers we've talked about tonight just seem so low to me to make this successful. And I'm sure the after-school committee has evaluated and reviewed and looked at things. I don't expect to go through all that again, but just maybe a better description of this is how much we've spent on, or Community Connections uses this much, or why I would do that much, or just more of a.
We can do that to the best of our ability. We, I can't, I might not be able to bring you hard numbers.
Right, I'm not expecting it to be like to the penny, but it just, thirty-seven thousand dollars just doesn't seem like it can possibly pull off what we're trying to do. Just maybe more justification for how we can make that happen.
People aren't paying for this.
Right, but that's, how far is that gonna go?
That's why I wanted to know too, right.
It would be great, along with the number of kids participating in sports programs, to see our athletic program budget.
Yeah, you were talking earlier, I do know that our extracurricular budget is spent, what did Grant tell us? Two-thirds of it is spent on both sports.
On sports.
Of the, of.
Our extracurricular budget.
Two-thirds is sports, yeah. So are two-thirds of our kids doing sports?
And do kids pay a fee to do a sport?
No.
No.
So it seems like there's some equity stuff going on too.
It's siloing.
You know, that like it's free to do a sport after school, but then it's gonna cost to do different, different kind of activities. It's interesting.
Well, and the, the sports budgeting is kind of mysterious too, because like the, the Nordic team doesn't have transportation in its budget. And I don't know how that decision was made, but.
It's key places.
That's a, that's, that gets pretty hectic every year trying to get kids to Nordic meets without a transportation budget. And, you know, some sports, the uniform budget is pretty, the uniform, you know, for their outfit is pretty non-existent. So how the budget is allocated among sports is.
And I, and I like your question about the number too, because sometimes we've supported a sport that has hardly anybody in it. I'd rather pay for the uniforms for the people that, you know, we've got enough to field a team, for example, kind of thing. And that's been iffy in the past.
Keep sending those sports questions, because I get a lot of them and I now have a monthly meeting with Matt Link. Because I was like, I need to meet, like, this is coming up a lot, so I need to learn more about how processes are done and stuff. So know that, that I just, I just started a monthly meeting with Matt out of need and because of questions that I get around sports. So send them my, you know, when you get them, send them my way for those kind of things. Like, I don't know that. I've never heard that before. So that, that's just really good information as I'm continuing to learn all the nuggets and pieces of our district.
But that our Nordic team doesn't have a.
Transportation budget.
Right, they have to drive.
Or that people have different uniform budgets. You know, that's strange to me, so.
I think our Nordic team also has one, one member.
I don't know. My kid did it.
Which I don't think it has a lot more.
My, my kid did it three years ago and there were like eighteen kids, I don't know. And they, they had to get themselves to meets, but then parents didn't want kids driving other kids and it was challenging.
I would love to see.
I don't know what the status of the program is now.
I think it ebbs and flows.
This all feeds into the other conversation of what's going on at the middle school for sports. And then how's the rec department dovetail into our sports program and create contiguous, or continuous path for kids who are doing baseball or basketball or whatever and how it's hard to coordinate all that. And it's, we kind of, I'm not saying we're not doing a good job, I'm saying it's hard. And that it has to be reevaluated at some regular level to determine, you know, we've got this big cohort of softball players coming through all of a sudden, or frisbee, oops, that's not the word, disc players coming through.
Ultimate, ultimate.
You know, I'm seeing them raising money for a club at the grocery store, but they're not really a sport. But they're the biggest group, or the bottom, the girls' volleyball, huge, right? And I was like, what? That's not a sport, that's a club. And, you know, it's so, I don't know how to do that, but it's, now we're talking about adding in the enrichment, which is sports often. It's mountain biking and hiking and it's just not team sports.
Actually, that's a good question, because in the past, haven't we not sort of competed with the rec department? If the rec department offered something, we didn't offer it, if they were willing to offer it. There, I don't know how that works, but.
It's not so much competition, it's kind of moody between the programs. I don't think anyone's too worried about competition, it's more holes, I think.
Well, I meant, if the rec department offered it, we didn't, because we didn't have to, we offered something else. And so we should be cognizant of that when we're looking at the big picture.
It's only five, six, right?
Yeah, rec department is at six. So it, I mean, it's making me think a lot, as I'm listening, what's the district's role and, and who is that person in the community? You know, like, I just don't know who, like, we can't take on everything, right? And we can't offer everything to every kid.
Right.
So, but, but what is our role? What is our role here to ensure continuity, ensure opportunities?
And what should we offer?
And what should we offer for opportunity? And I like, I like the question posed earlier, is do we have an equal opportunity for multiple avenues for kids to pursue? Because I'm not sure we do. And that's a really good question for us to look at what we can control, but we can't control everything. And there is a responsibility from a community, community aspect to offer things to kids too. Actually, I have a meeting with Bill Fraser next week to talk about some of these ideas. So I think it's on somebody's mind over there at City Hall. Yeah, anyway. All right.
All right, are you ready for?
Let's try to get ready up.
Maybe I'll open the screen.
Yep.
Do we have any consensus yet about days and extended?
Yes, I'm gonna set around.
Oh, oh, oh.
Looks like the extended days.
Like in the high school. Well, the middle school there, in the middle school is more similar to the elementary. In that there's a set number of kids with them.
I think May fifth, May first. One, we're at two. And then probably the seventeenth.
Only.
And I just have to look at all the responses and see which one of those is.
Music means to be selective, it used to be that everybody had to do what they wanted.
I just wanted to say hi to Adam.
He's our everything man.
Obviously.
Hold on, we just gotta put you on the big screen here.
Can I see, everyone, can you flip the screen down a little bit there so I can see?
Oh, yeah, because she's freaking out.
I see Jim.
Hello?
Is Michelle there too?
Yep, she's way at the end.
Hi Renee.
Hi Renee. There's Steve over there.
Oh, I see.
He's being an outcast today. We won't let him on the table.
Okay, now I'm getting dizzy.
We're just trying to get you on the big screen.
I'm sorry, I don't have a better backdrop.
It's very nice.
Well, see, we used to do that.
Waiting.
Searching, waiting. Oh, there you are.
So everyone, this is Renee DeBor, who is going to be our new high school principal. And Jim and I thought it was a good idea for you all to see her and meet her.
Yeah.
And ask any questions or anything you wish.
Yeah, no, thank you. Hello, yeah, thank you Renee for taking some time to introduce yourself to the board. You've met me, I guess all the board members, I guess, can do a quick introduction, but very excited to have you coming on board. And I'll let you introduce yourself, but why don't the board members just give a quick two-second introduction and then Renee can introduce herself and, you know, give a little background and then we can ask her whatever questions we have.
Can you hear Jim?
Yeah.
Talk loud, you should teach your voices.
Yeah, so I'm Jim Murphy, I'm the board chair, I've been on the board for a while. For my day job, I work for the National Wildlife Federation, doing legal and environmental. Tina?
Hi, and I'm Tina Muncy and I've been on the board a while and I'm retired.
Oh, I can't, I can't, I can't see her.
You can't see Tina? It's very important to see her.
But I did use to teach and I was a principal once upon a time.
Oh, lucky you.
Yeah.
Hi, Bridgette A.C. We met at one of the meet and greets at the high school.
Oh, hi.
Nice to see you again.
I can see you from a distance.
Great. I've been on the board a few years, also a lawyer in my day job.
Sure. Renee, I'm Ryan Zajak. I'm one of the Roxbury reps on the board. Been in school board for quite a while now, was in Roxbury, the merger board, the new merge board. Lots of school board fun. And outside of my school board work, I spend time running a small library in Roxbury.
Awesome. Nice to meet you, Ryan.
Hi Renee, I'm Lisa Frost and I'm also a Roxbury representative. I did not have the pleasure of meeting you at your visit and I am a freelance educator.
Oh, great.
She's taken up the title, I suppose.
Sounds so fancy. Hi Renee, I'm Andrew. I'm the newest member of the board. And for my day job, I'm the deputy state auditor and I look forward to meeting you.
I look forward to meeting you too, Andrew.
Andrew's super good at math.
It's a good thing since he's the auditor.
I'm Michelle, who you already met. I've, I have been on the board the longest, which is six years now. And in the daytime, I am the director of a local watershed group. And I have two daughters who are both in high school. One is graduating, so you won't meet her, the other will be a sophomore next year.
Great.
Steve is over here.
Hi, Steve.
Hey, I'm Steve Hinchin. I've been, oh, I'm actually not a board member right now. I was re-elected, but I forgot to go get sworn in at the clerk. So I am sitting in the audience. But I have a couple of daughters who will be in the middle school about the time you show up and I have a small business.
Oh, great. Nice to meet you, Steve. Nice to meet all of you.
We're missing one board member tonight, Becky.
Yeah, she was, she was not feeling well, so she said I would look up.
Ah, yes, I love seeing you. Um, do you want me to tell you a little bit about myself?
Yeah, love to.
Yeah, so I've been in education right out of college. I started teaching in an alternative school when I was twenty-one. So I grew up right outside of Portland, Oregon, in Vancouver, Washington. After going to school at Southern New Hampshire University, which used to be New Hampshire College when I went there many, many years ago. But when I finished up my college career, I moved back to my hometown, taught a few years in Vancouver at an alternative high. But when I finished up my college career, I moved back to my hometown, taught a few years in Vancouver at an alternative high school and then decided to kind of get out of the rain and go move to San Diego. And that's where I spent most of my high school or teaching career, was in San Diego. And then as I got my administrative credentials and my master's degree, I moved to El Segundo. Was a principal there for four years, a assistant principal for one, a principal for four. There, we became the first international baccalaureate school, actually the third public school in all of Los Angeles County to become international baccalaureate. And then my, my father passed away in that time, but my mom, I'm an only child. And my mom moved to the East Coast to be back with her immediate family. So I wanted to be closer to her, but I did not want to be living in Philly or New York City. So I put my finger on the map and landed in Chicago, which was very similar in a lot of respects to where I grew up, kind of that Midwest culture. And then I spent six years in Lake Forest, working at a high achieving middle school. And now I'm here and I am so excited to come to Montpelier. I have to tell you that when I saw the job description and then after I came there, I'm just even more excited about all the work that's being done there. I think one of the things that's been most important to me as I've gone through this whole process is not only to find a place where I feel like my strengths can be utilized, but also a place where I feel like I can learn from the work that's already been done. And that certainly is the case at Montpelier High School. It just, it is, being done there is phenomenal. I was really excited when I saw, initially saw the job description. I was so excited to see the work that was being done there as far as personalized learning plans, the flexible pathways to graduation, the work on equity and equality. There's just so many wonderful things happening there. And then to come there and then see it all kind of come to life with the students and the staff and the parents and some of the board members that were there, it was just a phenomenal experience. So I am really looking forward to coming there. And in fact, I'm coming there next weekend to find my place. So it's getting exciting and very real.
Do you have, do you have questions?
Yeah, questions for Renee?
I would be very, I'm just interested, and I realize you're just getting into this, but interested to hear about the transition. You know, how the, how you interact with the outgoing principal and the team here as part of transitioning into the job. So Bridget asked about transition. Could you hear her?
Yeah.
Do you want to start or do you want me to start?
Um, yeah, I can start.
Okay.
Um, Mike and I have already been in contact with one another. So when I'm there, unfortunately, I'm coming on the last day before spring break, which is an awesome time to show up and see how great things are at the school. So Mike and I will have a chance to just touch base then, but he is gonna be around the following week. So he and I are gonna have some time to connect that following Monday, just kind of one-on-one. And then I'm planning to be up there in June. So I'm planning to get a place probably June first and then kind of sporadically spend some time within the school, just kind of transitioning a little bit and kind of getting a feel for things with Mike, with the staff members and with the students as well. So looking forward to that. And then Libby, you can add whatever your thoughts are.
No, you, you add it on, so Mike is, Mike is very open to making sure this transition is as soon as possible. So, so yeah, they've already connected. We have plans for her to just walk around with him and really see the school through his eyes because it's unique, his perspective. And then the beautiful thing also, I don't even know if you know this, but Mike's new position is right down the road. And one of his roles is working with new principals to the position as mentors and things like that. So Renee, I don't even think we've talked about this yet, but principals who are new to buildings. In Vermont, there's state law that we, we get you a mentor and all of that. So Mike is now in charge of attaching mentors to new principals. So, so we got it in there to get you a good one.
Oh, my, me, my mentor.
Yeah, I know, right? It's not that, but, but yeah, that's, so we have that plan already starting and so McCrory's making it very easy.
Excellent.
Any other questions for, for Renee?
Nothing.
You know, something we didn't talk, I'm looking at Ryan and Lisa right now. And something that we didn't talk a lot in the interview process is that the merger with Roxbury Village is pretty, still pretty new. When you come next week, maybe I'll take you through Roxbury. We'll blink and we'll be there. And then, but the students coming, they're kind of working their way through our system to be more and more at Montpelier High School. And I think just to put on your plate, that's a piece that you're gonna have to really work at to see, to ensure that kids are being folded into the high school because it's different. They went to different schools before and, you know, like just the arrival of buses to the building will be unique. And kids getting on there coming to school. So there's gonna be some challenges and some opportunities there.
Yeah. And I think the beautiful thing about Montpelier High School, at least what I've, I've seen and heard and researched is that there's, from what I understand, the students and staff are very welcoming to students. Not to say that there isn't work that can be done, but there's such a presence of student voice. And I'm, I, just based off of my time there, I feel like students definitely will have a part to play in welcoming students from Roxbury into Montpelier High School and what that looks like and how we can make that better.
And to, just to add, in, at freshman year, we also get a big influx of kids who have been going to private schools and kids who are coming into our district from other districts because we have an exchange kind of a program. And we have a lottery. So for instance, when my daughter, who's a senior now, when she was a freshman, I think their eighth grade graduation was like fifty people. And then when they started freshman year, they had like seventy people. That's a big jump. So I think, you know, folding Roxbury kids into that, you're, you're also getting a bunch of other new kids, so.
Yeah, and I think, I think coming from other districts and coming from areas like Chicago and San Diego and whatnot, you know, I think conversations like that and looking at those numbers, it doesn't make sense for us to do something. And I don't know what's currently being done. Is there a freshman transition? If not, you know, is that something that we can look at as, as to how our students transition into, into the high school? Just speaking of those private school students and students from Roxbury, how can we get them more connected from day one?
It could definitely be stronger.
Eyes on the freshman, we do have a transition program run by students mainly who take control of it. And freshman around, it's, it's pretty cool to see because I saw it for the first time this year. So it'll be nice to have other fresh eyes on it to say, how can we, how can we do that? If we need to do it better, how do we, or it's pretty rocking right now.
Great.
Great. Any other questions for her? Thank you, Renee.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm so excited to help you virtually and soon we'll meet each other in person. Very good.
All right, thanks for taking the time tonight. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye, guys.
Good addition.
And. Never mind.
I think that's it. So just point of order, I will be sending around, pretty close to landing on some dates for the extended meetings and retreat. Likely extended will be first of May and fifth of June. Gonna reserve probably four-thirty out, but we might not need that much time. And the week of the seventeenth is probably most likely for the retreat.
Wait, can you say all that again?
He said first of June and. The extended first of May, fifth of June, that, pretty much count on that.
So what time might that start?
We're gonna book four-thirty, but depending on how we line up, we may bring in, you know, some sort of moderator facilitator for a couple of those or trainer. Like for the communications part, we're gonna reach out to the V S B A. And then the other part we want to do is, is a deep dive on equity, depending on how broadly we do that. And whether we bring in some sort of facilitator moderator will depend on the timing. So book four-thirty, it may be, it may be five or five-thirty, but just, you know, for scheduling purposes, book four-thirty.
And that's the first meeting of both May and June.
First meeting of both May and June.
Is going to start quite early.
Yeah.
And what are you eyeing for the retreat?
Week of the seventeenth.
June seventeenth.
June seventeenth.
So I just, I'll, I'll weigh in on that. There are some days there that I won't be able, oh, actually, maybe it might work out.
It seemed to be a good week for folks.
And technically, it's not a retreat.
It's an extended meeting.
It's an extended meeting, yes.
We can't have retreats.
They don't have retreats.
So the week of the seventeenth, if we, if we have any preferences, if we, if we have any preferences for days that week.
Did you fill out the Google?
Uh, I know that the Tuesday and Thursday don't work for Libby, so we're only talking about seventeenth, nineteenth, twenty-first.
Seventeenth, nineteenth. For a full day, right?
For a full day. And I just wanted to comb through people's answers and see if there are any of those days that, I don't recall any of them being off the charts. But I, before I picked a date, wanted to finalize it. The ninth, well, yeah, the nineteenth, we have a meeting. So we're able to do it that day and not have that, no, not.
Folding meetings, sort of.
Well, it takes the time of the meeting, it'd be the meeting.
Welcome to my world. It's your world, not mine.
All right, I think we have a motion to adjourn and a little early or.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? You opposed? Great, thanks all.